Meeting of the Champaign, I mean Urbana.
Wait a minute. One city at a time.
Got your attention, didn't I? Meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the whole will now come to order. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
President.
Ms. Huth?
Ms. Pat?
Here.
Mr. Arnold?
Here.
Mr. Waylon?
Here.
Ms. Wyman?
Here.
Mayor Satterthwait?
Here.
Are there any additions to the agenda? Any staff reports?
None, we didn't cover in our little tour.
If not, can we have approval of the minutes from the previous meeting?
Move approval?
Second.
Move. And seconded, that the minutes of the previous meeting be accepted. Any questions? Ms. Pat?
Thank you. I have one correction. On page one, item four, under public input, the last two people listed, well, the first of them, Lawrence Parker, 412 West Green, was speaking in support of the moratorium. So if his name can be moved up above the next statement, that would be helpful. And then the next statement, the following people addressed the committee, they were not in op-- or it was just one, but it was not in opposition to development on Green Street. It was, so it should say the following addressed the committee in opposition to the proposed moratorium. And then that would be Barry Weiner.
Any other additions or corrections? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing, hearing, none? Minutes stand approved. Any public input? Anyone who wants to speak before the council, fill out one of those yellow sheets in the back. You have a chance to speak for five minutes. Seeing none? We go to item five. Ordinance number 2003-06-060. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute in an agreement with use of right-of-way 1000 West Stoughton. Mr. Gray.
We had a request from Mr. Howard Wakelin to install a conduit with fiber optic cable to connect two properties that he owns, and those properties are listed in the packet. Specifically, it is 203 North Gregory at the corner of Stoughton and Gregory, and 1005 West Stoughton. And he has, among some of his properties, he's maybe coming to us at some other locations too, but wanting to connect for fiber internet access to these properties. And he has a little system that he then has a connection to one of the cable providers in the community. The request then is a license agreement, and we have done similar license agreements. Two that come to mind is a conduit and fiber connection for two properties that the Flexing Gate Corporation owns near Lerman Avenue. Another similar request was for Trinity Church at the corner of Anderson and Florida, connecting and crossing our right-of-way to its parsonage due south of the church. So these are not unusual situations. The language in the license agreement, of course, protects the city properly if we need to do any work in that vicinity. But I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions to Mr. Gray? If not, a motion would be in order.
Move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. But ordinance number 2003-06-060, you sent to the city council for approval. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Passes. Item number six. Ordinance number 2003-06-061. An ordinance approving a development agreement with Town and Country Apartments, Community Development.
Okay, this is for the, to approve a development agreement that's attached to your packet there, for the improvement of Oakland Avenue in return for Town and Country's agreement to build a minimum $2 million apartment building and a minimum of 4,000 square feet of commercial space on the north front edge of Oakland Avenue. And also, as part of the agreement, it would, the city of Urbana, upon the approval of the agreement, would vacate the right-of-way of Boydin Street that's north of Oakland And the reason we're doing this is because of not only their investment in what was before a pretty much blighted area of property, but also the roadway there is badly deteriorated. And if you look in attachment four, you can look at it, and it's their primary entrance from the east into their property. And so they came to us saying that they wanted to improve that area and basically asked the city for some help in improving that street, which serves as their primary entrance there. And it would also be beneficial to the property, commercial properties just to the south, which currently is El Toro Restaurant, and there's some mini storage. And to the south, Boydin Street goes to a sanitary business. And as far as the right-of-way vacation, the south portion that would be vacated is abutted on both sides by property owned by Town and Country. And to the north, it's all owned by Benders, and they've, they haven't expressed any negative concern over the vacation of the right-of-way. And as it stands, the right-of-way isn't used. It's pretty much overgrown, probably because of the businesses and the way that they're currently fronting on Cunningham Avenue. It's pretty unlucky that it would ever be used as such. So if anyone has any questions about the development agreement, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Waylon?
Is this the area that we saw tonight, down there by the Mason or what is it?
El Toro.
El Toro.
El Toro.
El Toro, si. That's the property.
That's it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, a motion would be in order.
Move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that this be recommended and sent to council for approval. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing or hearing none? This will go to council. Item number seven. Ordinance number 2003-06-062. An ordinance approving an amendment to an agreement with Interchange Properties, an Illinois Limited Liability Company. CDS, Community Development.
Pardon?
Mr. Walton?
I had hoped to provide a draft of the agreement tonight, and we just weren't able to get it done over the weekend. And so what I would like to do is to go ahead and speak to some of the changes that will be coming to you, a little bit of the history, and then maybe go over one of the major changes, which is the special service area financing. Have developed a timetable for that. So I apologize. I hoped we would have something more specific for tonight, but we don't have it. The reason I would like to go forward with some discussion is that with the fifth Monday, the next council meeting is July 7th, and if we don't make that meeting, then we're looking at July 21st. So we have considerable delay if we don't get going. So I would not ask you to approve the agreement without reasonable time to study it, and we may even have to do a special meeting, I don't know. But let's dig into it. The agreement that you'll have coming to you is an amendment of the original O'Brien Development Agreement. The original agreement that we approved was in January of 2001. There was actually a series of development agreements that occurred at that time, including a separate agreement with Interchange Partners LLC, which is O'Brien, Frasca, and Farman Fleet. We approved all three of those at the same time. A lot of work and effort has taken place since that time. Talking specifically about O'Brien's Development Agreement, they were obligated to acquire numerous properties from Frasca, the old Farman Fleet facility, Valentine, and there were several pieces of property that were assembled, some which the city optioned, some which they purchased and assembled into a large development track. There were significant amount of environmental remediation on one of the tracks that took place. The significant expenditures have taken place for the development of utilities, stormwater detention, sanitary sewers, site clearance. The total of the investment is several million dollars to date. So the developer has met many of his obligations in part, including the dedication back to the city of certain right-of-ways and the subdivision of the property, and probably most importantly, the sale of the track to Farman Fleet, so that they could build their, they purchased from O'Brien a portion of that property to build their facility. So all of that has basically taken place. The city as well has met a portion of its obligations. We and the state of Illinois and Champaign County did improvements to Route 45 on a very tight timeframe, and we met those obligations and were able to construct the new intersection of Route 45, the road improvements, the associated drainage improvements, and then the extension of O'Brien Drive on a timetable that allowed Farman Fleet to open last fall. So that was a fairly significant commitment. But our commitment was beyond that. Our commitment also involved the certain other inducements to O'Brien, including enterprise zone and sales tax incentives, if they were to start construction and finish relocation. But of course, that did not happen because of certain delays. There were delays in the project, and without going into them at length, they were related to primarily financing and the financing methodology for the project. So we're pretty certain that we're close to having those issues worked out, as well as the franchise approvals that are necessary. So with that being in place, we're now working on amendments to the development agreement. The amendments to the development agreement, there are several minor ones, just because there's significant time has elapsed since we did the first one, so we need to readdress it in terms of its sequence in time. But there are several, what I would call substantive, changes. The first one is, is that the previous agreement that you approved only listed a small number of franchises that would be present at the facility, the new facility. The new agreement lists all of the franchises, all nine franchises, that will be going there by contract. The second change is probably the significant, the significant change is the swap of enterprise zone tax abatements that were in place for tax increment financing incentives. And the reason that irrespective of any delay or any other aspect of this project, we had to make that change because, if you'll recall, in the timing, we did the development agreement with O'Brien, Frasca, and Farman Fleet. All, the O'Brien project was issued guarantees of enterprise zone tax abatements. We followed that agreement that fall with an overlay of a TIF district. Well, we're not able to do enterprise zone tax abatements with a, followed by a TIF overlay. It's just not able, we're not able to do it. We had two situations where that occurred. And the first one was the O'Brien project, and the second one was Longhorn Smokehouse. And we have, are in the process of dealing with that one, which is a swap of enterprise zone for TIF separately. That's underway. And then this one is much more detailed, but in principle, it's the same thing, is that we're substituting certain tax increment financing incentives that are directed towards eligible expenses for enterprise zone tax incentives. It doesn't work out exactly the same. There's certain quid pro quos that we have negotiated. For example, in the first agreement, the developer was entitled to split certain, on a pro rata basis, certain sales tax incentives with the city of Urbana after the first $200,000 in sales. Under the revised agreement, that goes to a quarter million before we split revenues with the developer. There were certain incentives that, or there were certain obligations of the city to extend O'Brien Drive, for example. In the new agreement, this will be financed by the special service area. Well, that's a good segue to special service area. The second major change to the agreement, when you see the details, is the introduction of special service area financing related to this project. I provided some background information on the special service area financing. I'm sure it was very entertaining reading. But in a nutshell, what happens is, is that the corporate authorities, and this is very simplistic, but the corporate authorities will agree on a particular project area to attach a special tax to that area for a special service, unique only to that property. In so doing, the developer then can, or we can issue certain obligations related to that. And what happens, in effect, is that rather than the developer spending $2 million on a road, for example, the special service area bond finances the road, and the developer pays it off over time. And one might say, well, you know, what risk is there to the city to this? And I think we're very sensitive to that, going all the way back to the Jumers deal. And we really are debt averse and risk averse when it comes to these types of things. So there would be no general obligation attachment by the city, or any obligation of the city to retire those. So it would be totally based upon the creditworthiness of the developer and any credit enhancements they may have. Those would be purchased, those bonds would be purchased by a separate lender, and what would happen is, is then, over time, the tax is applied only to the developer parcel, and it's paid off. So that was the very unique financing mechanism that we used to get this to where it needed to be in terms of the amount of money that was being borrowed by the developer. Basically, it takes, it increases the developer's lending ability because we're financing a portion of these improvements with the special service area tax. And without doing that, we would not have the project. So it's of no risk to us. It does have some expense associated with it. And I have a proposed, this would be exhibit three in the new document, which you don't have yet. This timeline provides you with a sketch of what some of the action items are for us. And this, once this development agreement is approved, there is significant, intense legal work that takes place in the first two months of this. You will, you will see by the timeline that we have to adopt a proposing ordinance. We've got to assure that there are certain legal assurances and opinions that are provided to the city as a part of a due diligence to hold us harmless. There are numerous legal documents that have to be drafted, including indentures and trusts and bonds and all kinds of other memorandums of agreement. We have to publish certain notices that will be taken care of by outside legal counsel. We have to mail certain notices. We have to hold a public hearing, and ultimately, we have to create the special service area and then levy a special, special service area tax. So it is, it is, I suppose, somewhat complicated. The good news is, is that we're not on the hook for the financing. This is a, probably not the only time that you will see this. I expect that you'll see special service financing techniques in the future. It hasn't been used much in this area, but it is used widely in burbs, for example. So that is a major change, and that's something that we all need to feel comfortable with going forward, and we need to make sure that we all understand what the risks are, which we believe are none. The only outside risk that we would have, I think, is there's considerable legal expense with this in preparing all of these documents. And of course, if for whatever reason, the bond issuance would go sour, we'd have those expenses out there. So we need to cover what would happen in that event. But for the most part, I think it's a, it's a unique tool, and it will probably allow this project to go forward. So that's the second major change. There are a few other smaller changes to the, to the development agreement, but that's where we are. You'll get the complete package as soon as I can, I'm positioned to give it to you, and as soon as we have a chance to do our final, final legal review. So that's where we are. That's sort of the history of where we've been with it. And there will be more very soon.
Questions? Any questions? Ms. Chenoweth?
In terms of dollar figures, what are we looking at in terms of the change in the development agreements? I understand the three points that you listed, but I, I'm not sure in terms of financial commitments from the city if we're talking about any more cash flow.
Well, they're, they're a little bit hard to compare because we're swapping out abatements for future incentives based upon the increment in the TIF. I think it is more, but there are some quid pro quos there in terms of raising the sales tax threshold, switching the incentive for the road to the development project. So there's kind of a ledger for both columns there, and you'll just have to take a look at it as each of those items in whole. And we think it's a fair swap-out at this point. So I do have, I do have some additional numbers I could share with you.
Okay. Is there a, in term, it may not be that numbers are changing, but is there a general move of risk, more risk being assumed by the city in the here and now, and maybe less risk over time?
Well, I think the--
I'm just trying, I'm trying to figure out some apples and apples I can compare.
Hard to do. In terms of risk, I think our risk is, the scenario is probably about the same. And the reason for that is, is that these incentives are not, for the most part, are not paid. There's some minor ones, a relocation expense of $30,000 and a $50,000 payment. But for the most part, all of these incentives are pay-as-you-go. We don't provide them to the developer upfront. The incentives are paid from either the increased sales that they have from the expanded project or from the new real estate taxes that are generated from the development. So they are paid in a pay-as-you-go basis. So it's, and that scenario is the same as the last. The details are different, but the risk assessment is, is basically the same in that regard.
The biggest risk that we have, I mean, you have to remember, the biggest outlay of cash that we had for this development is the road. And of course, Farman Fleet is there, but our part was $1 million, a little bit more. So we've already spent that money, and if we don't have this, then we risk not getting any of that actual sales tax that we've been cutting on for our investment.
Ms. Waylon?
I have a few questions. First, the change from $200,000 to a quarter million, is that a statutory requirement, or is that something that you've negotiated with, with the developer?
Which one?
You mentioned that there's a change of the, the sales tax or sales tax abatement.
Oh, no, we wanted that, and we demanded that.
Okay.
It was negotiated.
So it's not a statutory?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. The other thing, let's see, was, is this, this special service agreement, is this, do we have to wait the 60 days on this before we sign any other agreements, or like with, with the developer, or is this just, this will come later?
We want to put the, we want to sign, sign up the development agreement first. Because that assigns who's going to pay for the attorney's fees and everything else associated with that. So we want to sign that first, and then the special service area will follow immediately thereafter.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I just have one. The difference between the $200,000 and a quarter million dollars?
Yes.
Is that permanent or for a specified period of time?
It's for a specified period of time.
Okay.
And what is that specified period of time? Is it the two years that we had in the last agreement?
No, no, no. It's a, it's a lump sum amount of money, and there's a split until they reach that amount. And I can't tell you what it is.
That's all right. You can get that to us later.
Yeah.
No more questions? We'll see this ordinance again when all the changes are put together.
Depending on their sales, it'll go away after five to seven years. All of it goes away.
And are we seeing this then July 7th at council?
Well--
Hopefully?
I'm not really sure how I'm going to handle that. This is a really important document, and I want to make sure that you have enough time to review it. If we're to get this together in the next few days, I may even call you up individually and go over it. I don't know. But we need to, we need to make sure there's a high comfort level with the document before we approve it. Still like to shoot for that July 7th. The worst-case scenario would be the 21st.
Sorry. One other question is, we could also have a special council meeting on July 14th before--
Well, that might work.
--committee or at 7:30, and then go into committee after.
One option might be to discuss it on July 7th and approve it the next week at a special meeting. We could do that.
Okay, we'll see this one--
As soon as we can.
--when all the changes are taking place. Item number eight. Ordinance number 2003-06-064. An ordinance approving an agreement for promotion and marketing services with the Urbana Business Association. A 501(c)(3) number private corporation. Ms. Chenoweth?
Mr. Hayes, I need to excuse myself due to a conflict of interest.
What you have before you is very similar to what we had in terms of a letter of understanding with the Development Corporation last year. We felt that there's a significant amount of money here. We felt it should be in the form of an ordinance and a contract that's formally approved by the city council. So there has been some modifications to the agreement, small ones, but there are some modifications to the agreement. And what we are trying to do is to be a little more specific in what services are being provided for the dollars. As opposed to the CBB or the EDC, for example, this, this is a actual contract for services. That was the route that we wanted to go, so we could verify what it is that we get for our money, and there's not issues about who's doing what and when. So this was the plan. And what you have is, in the budget that was recently approved, is a budget line item of $45,000. This agreement specifies how those dollars can be spent. There are really two categories of funds, which is the same as in last year's agreement. One is the unrestricted amount, which is used for staffing and other matters, which is paid upon the execution of the contract, which is $10,000. Then the other $35,000 is in the form of restricted funds. The restricted funds are in the form, come in-- The restricted funds are in the form, come in several categories. First of all, they're, they're paid by the UBA and then reimbursed by the city. We, we do all of this on a reimbursement basis. My office handles most of it. And the, what we do is collect the receipts from the expenses that were eligible and then we reimburse within the next couple of weeks. The restricted funds can be used for the Urbana parade of homes. We have a 50-50 funding match for that up to $5,000. And we set that aside for the, for the parade of homes. And perhaps since Lori's here, she can talk a little bit about the parade of homes, which was last weekend, which was very successful. Another big line item in this, in this contract is the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival. The city of Urbana, for 20-some years, has been a major corporate sponsor of this. And up to $10,000 will be reimbursed for, for that event. There are also some smaller downtown promotional events that we will reimburse for entertainment and marketing, up to $1,500 per event. Right now, those are the British Car Show, Beer Tasting, Chili Cookoff, and then a couple of other smaller events. And if you have questions on that, I would again direct those to Lori. We did add a little more language in here. In this section, I provided a little more specificity as to what kind of, basically free promotional activities would take place associated with these events. I also put in a provision that would split, instead of just buying, you know, $500 to pay for a band, that 250 could go to the band and 250 for promotion. So we have a 50-50 split between entertainment and promotion on these. So we can beef up the promotion side of, of that to some degree. Also, a new and very exciting program that the UBA has worked well with the city on is developing our downtown banner program. And we have, in addition to the program, that receives some outside funding from those purchasing banners, we also have $5,000 for the purchase of general welcome Urbana-type banners in the agreement. We also have, as the, as the final reimbursable category, the certain expenses related to their website development, co-op advertising, and general marketing expenses. And that is up to $10,000. The rest of it is generally the same as the previous agreement. Either party can terminate this agreement by, in writing, with, upon 30 days' notice. And it's set up with signature blocks for the mayor and with an ordinance approving the agreement. With that, we probably should hear from Lori.
Thank you, Bruce. I would probably first and foremost like to talk about the home parade that we just wrapped up yesterday. Very successful on very, on different angles. This year, we had five participating subdivisions. We also added a bus tour on Sunday, which was full, I might add. The other element that really turned it around for us this year was the participation of Urbana businesses. You know, and my first year was last year. And when you show a home, it always shows better if it looks like it's lived in. So having furniture, flowers, art hanging up on the walls, we added that element to this year. We searched for as many Urbana businesses as we could find to help us fill the homes with furniture, with flowers, with art, with food from Strawberry Fields to pet food from All Creatures Animal Hospital. We really, I mean, we didn't create a box for this. And that helped us well. And we, we recognized all of those participants Friday at a garden party. And it was truly a great networking opportunity. When Paul Chapman walks into the room and says, "I hardly know anyone here," then you know that you're pulling more people into the venue. The bus tour on Sunday was full. We had about 40 people. I do know, in speaking to people, we had at least six couples that were truly interested in purchasing homes. And talking to Ed Armstrong, they sold seven homes. And talking to Ron Randall out at Landis Farm, he signed two more contracts, you know, for homes. So it was successful for a lot of people, so we're, we're very pleased. We, we did beef up our advertising this year. In addition to the insert, we did a lot more print ads. And coming off of our Sister Cities event, I think we were able to show that you don't have to live in a half a million dollar house to, to have a new home. And we showed a lot of affordable housing. In the packet that I gave you, it lists all of the homes that were decorated by our interior designer, who also is an Urbana independent business. We gave a sample of the bird food from All Creatures. I mean, just all of those little things that are really so simple to do, but really hopefully make an impact for them. On the bus tour, we had two city staff members, Barb Steele from Public Works and Rob Kowalski from Community Development. The purpose of the bus tour, not only to, to carry those people around from subdivision to subdivision, but also to talk about the other things that the city's doing. Say, the intersection, crossing at 130 and 120 Road. All of those things that really, unless you follow city council, you're not really paying attention to all of the things that the city's doing to make your city a better place to live. So we had a lot of opportunity to talk about all of the development that's going on in the city. So all in all, we feel it's a very successful event. And if there are questions about any other items, I'd be happy to answer them.
Ms. Swimmer?
Yeah, well, first I want to just say that the event Friday evening was, was a really nice event. And I appreciate you inviting council members to that. It was, it was really enjoyable to meet.
And if I might interrupt, it, you know, a lot of, a big part of this Build Urbana Home Parade is due to the city offering the tax rebate program. And certainly, that is the boost that I think we, we all understood that we needed. And it makes a tremendous difference. Builders will tell you that and developers will tell you that. So we wanted to show appreciation to those people who made, who helped make that happen.
Well, thank you. And certainly, I think we're all interested in hearing from ideas from the Urbana Business Association and others of other ways to, to improve Urbana. And we're always looking for ways. I did have two questions about the number two seed downtown promotions. I'm wondering if our date's set for the British Car Show and the International Beer Tasting and Chili Cookoff event?
The International Beer Tasting and Chili Cookoff event is scheduled for September 27th. I would like to mention too, on our website, one of the things that we've been able to add is a calendar of events. So if, I think if you go to that www.urbanabusinessalliance.org and click on what's happening, you'll see that those things are up and listed. It is happening at Lincoln Square, inside and out. And we're very excited. We have sponsors this year. We had sponsors last year, but certainly with the success of last year's event, this one is certainly going to be bigger and better. I don't know if it's double in attendance, but certainly half again as much. The British Car Show, I have not talked to the organizer about the date of the next event, but certainly as soon as I know, it'll go up on our website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Swimmer?
Yeah, Lori, I was wondering, this is going to be two weeks, I think, before we consider regular council meeting. I'm wondering, the sheet that you gave us that listed goals, I'm wondering if we can get some numbers added in there? Like under British Car Show, it just says bring people to Urbana. And I'd like to, if there's a number-
Sure.
What's the goal of, I mean, is it true or is it on there?
Sure, are you looking, hotel rooms? Are you looking at attendance at the event? Because those numbers-
You can choose the benchmark that you want. I just, I don't know at all what that means, number-wise. It doesn't say anything to me. So you can choose whatever you want.
Certainly.
And if you, and go through, there are other opportunities, like the Magic on Main Street, coordinating with downtown businesses. If you can provide some examples of what that actually means, this document would be a lot more meaningful.
Certainly.
We could also measure, you know, afterwards if these goals were actually reached.
Okay. I can do that.
Be great. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Oh, and the other, I'm sorry, one other thing. The various promotion ideas, each one of these would probably have very, at the same time, very similar promotion opportunities, yet oftentimes, there might be different promotion opportunities available. And if, for each one, you might list a couple of ideas of how you might take advantage of different promotional opportunities, whether you can get free media or paid media or things like that, other opportunities, city website, Lysirbs, whatever.
Attach those to this sheet?
Yeah, just underneath each one, if you could just list a couple of ideas.
Like the British-
Like a marketing plan for each event? Is that what I'm looking for? Something pretty basic. I don't need big details, but-
Okay. We can put generalities. No problem.
Any other questions? I, I too enjoyed the garden kickoff Friday. Let me just ask you a question. On the Chili Cookoff event, there was an individual who was in that event last year. And he's supposedly, he was one of the top cooks around town. I think he came in second. But he really enjoyed it and he gave it all the praises. Is there a fee for people to join, to get into this Chili Cookoff contest?
There is, Mr. Hayes. And I believe this, Chief Munt is at 25, I'm sorry, Chief Munt is our Chili aficionado. And so I think we've set those fees at $25 for entry fee. Yes, sir. And we do have openings if you're so willing to participate.
Chief Munt knows about that four alarm chili, you know?
Any other questions?
Mr. Hayes, I'm sorry, if I could add one thing. For the International Beer Tasting and Chili Cookoff, what, one of the things that we're looking to do, certainly to attract other chili participants, when, when you look at tourism and marketing and trying to bring people in, if you go out past a certain point, then it, it makes a lot of sense to maybe pay for the person traveling the most distance. These people do this every weekend and this, this is the fun thing they do. So I know Chief Munt has worked hard and we're working with a hotel motel association to put some, some dollars to that. So the people traveling the furthest distance. And then, of course, the same prizes that we awarded last year. Best, best tasting chili, hottest chili, those types of things. We'll have cash prizes with them. So again, trying to increase our heads in beds, people to stay in the hotels, you know, spend their money in Urbana.
Any other questions? Not a motion being ordered?
Move to- Second. Move to Senate to Council with recommendation for approval.
Been moved and seconded. Ordinance number 2003-06-04. Recommended for approval and to be sent to the council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, hearing none, seeing none. It passes. Item number nine. Ordinance number 2003-06-065. An ordinance vacating a portion of Gregory Place between Nevada and Oregon Street.
This relates back to our East Campus Commercial Agreement and our right-of-way agreement that we signed two years ago with the University of Illinois. We've had the appropriate public hearings and we're moving forward now with the vacation of Gregory. You'll recall, this is the street that is adjacent to the East Campus Commercial Project. It's part of that development agreement. It's also part of the agreement with the University of Illinois. All of the necessary steps have been taken to vacate this property and we're moving forward.
Questions? If not, a motion would be in order?
Move to Senate to Council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Let this be sent to council with a recommendation for approval. Any questions? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Hearing none, seeing none. It passes. I'd just like to make one announcement before we leave. Saturday, 12 noon, at King Park, gonna be a big celebration. It'll be Jettie Rhodes Day, celebration of the new pavilion and lavatory facilities. And there'll be quite a few activities going on. So those of you who might want to spend some time to see all the improvements in King Park, we'd appreciate you being there. Thank you very much. No, huh?
What is it?
12 noon, Saturday, the 28th. No further business coming before this August 4th. This committee of the whole is dismissed.